All right, I will call the meeting to order. It is now 7:06 PM. And I ask everyone to stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, we will do roll call. Joan, can you move on, please? Yes. Is everybody here?
I am.
Those who will be here, I think. Okay. Present. Michael Martinez.
Present.
Ralph Box.
Present.
Richard Young. I'm here. Gary Bendix.
Present.
Police Chief Mark Swistec. He's absent today. It is his birthday, yeah. He's celebrating his birthday. His family. I'll have to ask that for the little change. Absent. Parker. President Al Melwick is absent. And Matt is absent, BCA. Deb is absent. She told me she would be able to be here today. Okay. Ray is absent. Ray Douglas, Buffalo Minister here, my commission president, Ralph, acting president.
I'm here.
Oh, he is the president, no? Oh, that's right. You were elected right in February.
He's the last one standing.
Last one standing, okay. Samantha Arnold is not here. And Bob Zabowski is here, I heard him. Okay. Okay, I do have, my next step, thank you very much, Joan, is adopting meeting agenda. And I'd like to point out that a version that I sent you today, it was actually a second version. So if that has got printed, version number one, it should be two for what I'm presenting to you today. Under minutes, I need to add, I needed to add the minutes of January 11th. I omitted those because Joan sent us that copy as well, since we had tabled that. And on the last page for the 75th anniversary meeting committee, I needed to add a date, which I had forgotten earlier. So that is March 28, 2022, at 5:30 PM before the part board meeting. 75th anniversary. Right. The meeting is at 5:30 on March 28th, same day as the part board, but just, you know.
And then last thing, Joan, just a small update is you have April 12th hybrid meeting, our next meeting. Sure it's gonna be in person or?
What? No, no, it's, I did it. I did mine. Over here, yeah, hybrid is supposed to be a question, so we can take that off. Thank you. Thanks for printing it out.
Yeah, I would say not now, but we could change our lines.
Right, right.
I have no further comments on the agenda.
Michael, nothing? Okay, I need a motion to accept.
Make a motion to accept the meeting.
And I'll second that motion.
Or meeting, or meeting agenda.
Meeting, thank you. Michael Martinez has moved and Ralph Box has seconded, adopting the meeting agenda as it has been presented. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. The minutes have been approved. Three ayes, one absent, and one vacancy. Yep. The next would be the accepting of the minutes, or the approval of the minutes of the February 8th meeting. So have you had a chance to take a look at these minutes?
I have reviewed them and I do have an additional.
Okay, I have a question. Under minutes, it's December, the minutes, December 30th minutes, Michael Martinez made a motion to accept the January 11th minutes. That has been taken care of. Oh, that has been? Okay, all right. I didn't print all that because this is the copy I had. Okay. All right. That was the only thing that I noticed. So I will ask for a motion to accept these minutes.
Motion to accept the minutes, updates.
And I will second that.
Okay, seconded. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, minutes have been approved. Three ayes, one absent. Okay. Major signature. Okay. You don't have to beg me. I come in when you ask me.
Let's get them over already.
I come in. But I'll tell you what, depending if it gets in here, I don't know if you think I've ever talked about it.
Well, it's been, it's been confusing slightly because of the hybrid setups going back and forth. And, you know, it's certainly my fault that sometimes it doesn't.
There's more, there's two for each one. Okay. Hold on. Okay, thank you. Now we can move on to the vouchers. Vouchers. Yes, ma'am. Okay. You've all failed the, almost like sent you through email, right?
Yes.
Yes. So, let's see what this one is. Let's start with the January 31st payroll. I'll give you the grand totals if you need any more. Grand total is $3,579.21 that covers the transition of all the documents over to the general ledger, so that we can actually make out a check.
Sure.
Okay. Any other?
I have no questions.
Go ahead. No questions? Okay, in that case, I need a motion to accept. This is for the payroll, correct? This is for the payroll.
I'll make a motion to accept the January 31st payroll.
Okay. Thank you, I need a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Ralph Box move. Michael Martinez seconded, approval. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, minutes have been approved. Three ayes, one absent. Okay, major signature. Okay. You don't have to beg me. I come in when you ask me.
Let's get them over already.
I come in. But I'll tell you what, depending if it gets in here, I don't know if you think I've ever talked about it.
Well, it's been, it's been confusing slightly because of the hybrid setups going back and forth. And, you know, it's certainly my fault that sometimes it doesn't.
There's more, there's two for each one. Okay. Hold on. Thank you. Now we can move on to the vouchers. Vouchers. Yes, ma'am. Okay. You've all failed the, almost like sent you through email, right?
Yes.
Yes. So, let's see what this one is. Let's start with the January 31st payroll. I'll give you the grand totals if you need any more. Grand total is $3,579.21 that covers the transition of all the documents over to the general ledger, so that we can actually make out a check.
Sure.
Okay. Any other?
I have no questions.
Go ahead. No questions? Okay, in that case, I need a motion to accept. This is for the payroll, correct? This is for the payroll.
I'll make a motion to accept the January 31st payroll.
Okay. Thank you, I need a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Ralph Box move. Michael Martinez seconded, approval. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Aye, as well. Okay, on this one, I don't know why that is. Then there's another one that is for payroll taxes for January. Having to do the payroll every month, I have to report the taxes every month instead of quartering. So you'll be getting it every month. And the taxes for January payroll is $2,773. Of that, it's, all the taxes has been withheld from payroll and it's also the taxes that Tom pays. Okay. Any questions?
No.
All right, then, I need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
And I will second that motion.
Okay, Michael Martinez has moved to approve the payroll taxes, January payroll taxes. Ralph Box has seconded. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried. The voucher is approved. Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Okay, on February, your mission of vouchers, I will read those. These are the additional. Indiana legal physical equipment, $382 for membership for clerk treasurer. And some membership for 88 and title board, $25. Republic services, $3,888. AT&amp;T for phone and fax, $201.40. Chase card services, that was for our bill being in, $16.40. Freeman and associates for the general settlement, $337.30. Freeman and associates for legal code enforcement, credit card resolution, paving, taking asset, town code, $2,495. Freeman and associates, legal collection review, $120. Freeman and associates for the general, the general fee, $622.50. Freeman and associates for legal for December retainer, $1,000. They no longer have a retainer by the way, you know that. This is from December. From December.
Yes. Okay, I'll make a motion to accept these February 22, 22 additional vouchers.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, Ralph Box has moved. Michael Martinez has seconded. The has to accept the February 22, 22 additional vouchers. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the motion is carried. Vouchers have been approved. Okay. I think I've done, okay. In that case, then I will move on and what did I do with my plans? Oh my gosh, I dropped my papers.
Next step is an anniversary report.
Yes, I've got the, I just want to find my agenda anyway. I don't know if I passed along. Okay, thank you. All right, the 75th committee report for town council. And here is, this is what Jean wrote, Dear Dinah, here's a report from our committee tonight, for tonight, that was, they just met this past, no, last week, I believe, on the 28th. The committee met last week on Friday, I mean, on February 28th, 7:00 PM at the firehouse in attendance for Sam and Jean Paxton, Kristy and Jim Baines, Gary Bendix at the beginning of the meeting, Kevin and Clara Chen, and Steve Scott and Kathleen Doleo. We have named the event, events as such. July 16th will be the Michiana Shore's 75th Birthday Family Fun Fest. August 27th, Michiana Shore's 75th Birthday Dinner/Dance Celebration. I'll give a little aside over here, we were discussing that one time just on, you know, aside somewhere, and said an anniversary seems like a very boring word constantly. So we're gonna celebrate it like a birthday and be happy with balloons and blah, blah, blah. So, you know, that was very good for it. So I said, sounds good to me. They went on, here we go. Now I go back to Jean's report. We expressed interest in having the Dunes Theater participate in our events and Kathleen and Steve were very enthusiastic. They offered to have July 16 evening at the theater at Michiana Shore's night. The show is a Rodgers and Hammerstein musical review, which is right in keeping with the 1940s when our town was founded. All residents attending the show that night will have discounted tickets. We will have some type of performance from the Dunes at both of our events. This will be determined later because they have just started auditions. Steve and Kathleen expressed a great interest in working more closely with the town moving forward. And if you don't know, Steve Scott happens to be a, I mean, he's a renowned actual theater director, you know, from Chicago Goodman Theater and a lot of, you know, he's done a lot of books. Anyway, a lot of progress has been made with firming up the August 27th event. We are waiting cost projections for the bar, dessert, and appetizer areas. The committee has authorized the securing of the tent and porta potties for both events since these are in high demand. Sam Paxton has paid for a deposit on the tent of $315, which he would like to be reimbursed for. The receipt and contract have been submitted to Dinah Uris. At the next town council meeting, I will have a breakdown of costs for the August 27th event to present to the council. All receipts are being saved and filed and we are looking at all costs with a critical eye to value. Also, ticket prices for the August 27th event will be $40 per person. This will include dinner and two drinks per person. We would like the July 16th event to be free. Richard Young has agreed to be the emcee for the July 16th event. Dinah Dubris has agreed to be the emcee for the August 27th event. Kristy and Jim Baines, along with Jenny Nyek, have been working on sweatshirts and t-shirts that will be sold in commemoration for the 75th birthday. The design will be proposed to the council at the next town council meeting. All of our work is open to the public. Please call me at any time with questions, and she includes her number. We have a binder or notes that are available for anyone's viewing. Our next meeting will be March 28, 5:30 at the firehouse. Thank you, Jean Paxton. So all I can tell you is that these people are very excited about planning this. So I think that's really great and I'm really glad that we don't, do all of it. Can I get a copy of that? Absolutely. I thought I sent a copy to you by email today. I did not? Okay. Not that, I didn't get the one from February when you said you were gonna send it along. Okay, Joan, then I will do that right away. No problem. Here we go. Okay, I can do one now, for the other, you later on. Okay? I don't want to look for that one now. Okay, all right. Here we go. Next step in my, oh, and here are the two documents. It's a tent invoice and a tent contract. So Joan, I will pass these along to you. Okay, and I think, I don't know, I, we're gonna have to sign a contract, so I imagine I can sign it for the town with regards to signing for this, for the rental of the tent. You know that they're getting. That's for the rental of the? Yeah, yes, it's a rental. They had to put money down already, so they have, Sam Paxton has paid, I believe, $315. It said already. So he would like to be reimbursed for the monies, in fact. He must have gotten a receipt for the dump. Well, I'm sure that he did. I'm sure he did. So I will ask them for that. Okay, very good. Okay, oh, this is actually from Classic Rental, so let's see. Okay, you and I can take a look at this later on or whatever else we need, we'll add, okay? All right. So, but I'm going to ask the town council at this point to approve, because we should approve any expenditures that they're going through for, you know, for this particular thing. If you recall, we earmarked $5,000 for them to get started on, you know, on working on this. Now Jean has also been getting some donations from various people for expenses with regards to this and is going to continue asking or accepting, you know, donations and hopefully the, the ticket prices of our, the dinner dance, together with any of those donations should be able to cover all the expenses that the anniversary events, you know, should incur.
Joan, thank you for the formal sort of, how are you communicating to people about, like, donations?
Nothing. Nothing. It is, Joan is not supposed to do anything. She's not on the committee because she's the clerk treasurer and has plenty of things to do. The committee is communicating to everybody. Yeah, I have a lot to do to keep track and getting all the receipts and everything. So she's gonna do other things.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, so the committee itself is communicating with Samantha Arnold, who is the website administrator, and she's already put out a couple of things. So if you take a look, you're getting, if you're on the list, because I know that you are, I know you're on. Brenda, I think you're on the list. So there was, for the little newsletter that comes out for, you know, Michiana, yeah, so it comes from the website. And it'll say County Michiana Shores, check just in case, check on your spam file or something like this. But it'll come from the MyShores, M-I-S-H-O-R-S, I think, whatever, anyway, but, and it does list, you know, the, our towns, many kind of events. So check for something. I don't think it's gonna say Samantha, just say County Michiana Shores website, and it should show you. So, but that will not be enough there. I, when I went to one of the meetings, I brought up to them, I couldn't come this month, but I went the month before, and I mentioned that we're gonna be, we will need to send actual paper letters to every single person in town about this as well, so that they're gonna generate some kind of this mailing for us. And if we can get them printed off, they will take care of folding and stuffing. I can save them some money. We will be sending out the, with the leaf pickup and the trash in the middle of May. Oh, that's gonna be too late. They're gonna do it now. That's gonna be too late. And we're gonna, and the leaf pickup, we have to send out in May. When is the leaf too late? Are they recruiting? May? Leaf pickup is gonna be before May, not in May? Oh, as far as Dunham's know about leaf pickup. I'm talking about your. Oh, yeah, 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 okay. If they had a flyer or something. Yeah, oh, well, we'll be, that will definitely be, we're gonna need to do that. But they're gonna inform people of things now, so people could include it on their calendars as they're planning their summer or things that they're doing, that these events are taking place. But we are gonna be sending out a letter about leaf pickup and we have to do a town, sort of like a newsletter in general, so they're gonna include all of that. So that'll be something that they'll work on and so we could get that out. But they will take care of the mailing and certain, not the, you know, the folding and sorting, whatever, you know, needs to be done, so. But now, before we do that, I need a motion to approve the payment of the, of the deposit that Sam Paxton has already made.
Motion to approve. Reimbursement.
That's the 315 bucks.
315.
I second that motion.
Okay, thank you. All right, Michael Martinez moved, Ralph Box seconded. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. It has been approved, tent rental. Okay, and as soon as I find my agenda, I will move on. On my agenda.
I think there was something else. I only signed three things and we need to write in four.
Oh, yeah, there was one more. Thank you, you are absolutely right. There is one more, it was on the part. It was an enthusiastic group. Oh, and Ralph, you were at one of the meetings too.
I could make the last.
Yeah, and they were, they're very enthusiastic about, you know, the work that they're doing. And I think that there will be caps as well, not just sweatshirts and t-shirts. That's another thing. Yes? Sales tax has to be paid. Yeah, you mentioned that, you know, before. Okay, well, they'll have to work it out. Are they creating their own private entity?
No, I'm sure.
Entity, no? A private what? Entity? No, 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 no. It's just the committee, so they're not doing anything. So who's gonna be paying the sales tax? I think that we'll have to include the sales tax into the price of whatever, make a calculation of how much the price of each, you know, round it out, so that it would be... And then pay it? Yeah, and then pay it all at once, so that that way, nobody has to worry about paying, you know, what, $15.39? It'll be, you know, whatever. So, okay. All right, let us, there are no resolutions and ordinances today, so we move on to appointments to boards and commissions, liaison positions. We do not have any. We will have a liaison position to fill once we get a new town council member, but, you know, I should say that in communications, I should say this, which is farther down, but I will say it right now, that we are going, we have received a communication from Mike Lancioni, that he is stepping down, he actually stepped down as of the end of February, on February 28th. Mike is moving away from Michiana Shore, so obviously he will no longer be able to be a part of our town council. So we are going to be moving to contact the Democratic Party to inform them of what is taking place, to get our, you know, and then get the ball rolling with regards to replacing Mike Lancioni. So we will miss them, both he and Sonia worked, you know, hard on the things that were taking place here. Sonia especially is very, you know, unhappy about leaving all the, you know, things that are here in Michiana Shore, so, I mean, they both, Sonia, you know, was literally crying about it, so. Anyway, let us move on to departmental reports. Chief Swistec sent a report out, which I believe everybody got. Okay, Joan, you have gotten it to the police report, correct? I did not print a copy of that one off for this, but there... I didn't get it. Your name was on it from him, from Chief Swistec. Who did you, when he mailed it? I guess I won't make a problem printing. Oh, maybe, then I'll make sure we get another one over to you. But I think... It's different than what I have. Could be. Let me see. Do you have it pulled up, maybe?
Well, I have the view of it.
There's just a very, how about the other sheet that had just a very short summary? Yeah, he summarizes them. One of the documents was a summary.
Yeah.
Yeah, there is. Can you, do you mind reading that out, Michael?
Yes. The Long Beach Police Department responded to 132 calls for service when compared to 142 in 2021, for a decrease of 10 calls for service. During the month of February, six incident reports were documented with no arrests for the month. In summary, the month was very mild as it was a mix of cold and snow for the most part. February 3rd, Sergeant James Shulley responded to the 400 block of Pine Wood Drive in reference to a domestic dispute. No physical violence, just verbal, and an incident report was documented. This is an ongoing marital dispute and a divorce is pending in the court system. February 16th, Sergeant James Shulley responded to the 2,400 block of Shorewood Drive in reference to a theft report, a credit card fraud investigation. The victim reported that there was an unauthorized charge to his credit card. Victim has since been reimbursed by their financial institution. February 8th, Deputy Toby Babcock is conducting an investigation with the town of Michiana Shore's reference, inappropriate conduct. We are being assisted by the Indiana State Police Internet Crimes against Child, Children Computer Forensics Team. This investigation will be ongoing for the next several months while additional information is gathered. Initial evidence was seized as a result of a search warrant that was issued by the La Porte County Judge. February 22nd, Sergeant James Shulley responded to the 400 block of Pine Wood Drive in reference to a domestic dispute. No physical violence, just verbal, and an incident report was documented. This is an ongoing marital dispute and a divorce is pending in the court system. February 23rd, Chief Swistec responded to the 400 block of Oakland Drive in reference to a death investigation. A 22-year-old male was discovered deceased in his bed in the early morning hours. We were assisted by the La Porte County Coroner's Office EMS and the Michiana Fire Department. Autopsy and toxicology reports are pending, cause of death unknown at this time. February 25th, Sergeant Shulley documented incident report reference to the Kessler Police Supply Exchange. Respectfully, Chief Mark.
Motion to approve. Reimbursement.
That's the three hundred and fifteen bucks.
Three hundred and fifteen.
I second that motion.
Okay, thank you. All right, Michael Martinez moved. Ralph Fox seconded. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Okay, thank you. It has been approved. Tent rental. Okay, and as soon as I find my agenda, I will move it. On my agenda.
I think there was something else. I only signed three things and we brought in four.
Um, oh, yeah, there was one more. Thank you. You are absolutely right. There is one more. It was on the part. It was an enthusiastic group. Oh, and Ralph, you were at one of the meetings too.
I could make the last.
Yeah, and they were, they're very enthusiastic about, you know, the work that they're doing, and I think that there will be caps as well. Not just sweatshirts and t-shirts.
Oh, that's another thing.
Yes.
Sales tax has to be paid.
Yeah, you mentioned that, you know, before. Okay, well, they'll have to work it out.
Are they creating their own private entity?
No, I'm sure.
Entity, no?
A private what? Entity?
Entity.
No, 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 no.
So-
It's just a committee, so they're not doing anything.
Is it paying the sales tax?
Um, I think that we'll have to include the sales tax into the price of whatever, make a calculation of how much the price of each, you know, round it out, so that it would be-
And then pay it?
Yeah, and then pay it all at once, so that that way, nobody has to worry about paying, you know, what, fifteen dollars and thirty-nine cents. It'll be, you know, whatever. So, okay. All right, let us, there are no resolutions and ordinances today. So, we move on to appointments to boards and commissions, liaison positions. We do not have any. We will have a liaison position, uh, to fill once we get a new town council member, but, you know, I should say that, in communications, I should say this, which is farther down, but I will say it right now, that we are going, we have received a communication from Mike Lancioni, that he is stepping down. He actually stepped down as of the end of February, on February twenty-eighth. Uh, Mike is moving away from Michigan Shores, so obviously he will no longer be able to be a part of our town council. So, we are going to be moving to contact, um, the Democratic Party to inform them of what is taking place, to get our, you know, and then get the ball rolling with regards to replacing Mike Lancioni. So, we will miss him both, um, he and Sonia worked, you know, hard on the things that were taking place here. Sonia especially is very, you know, unhappy about leaving all the, you know, things that are here in Michigan Shores. So, I mean, they both, Sonia, you know, was literally crying about it, so. Anyway, uh, let us move on to departmental reports. Chief Swistec sent a report out, which I believe everybody got. Okay, Joan, you have gotten it to the police report, correct? I did not print a copy of that one off for this, but, um-
I don't get it.
Pardon?
I didn't get it.
Your name was on it from him. From Mr. Swistec, who did you? When he mailed it?
I guess I won't be a problem printing.
Oh, maybe. Then I'll make sure we get another one over to you.
Something that's different than what I have.
Yeah, could be. Um, let me see. Do you have it pulled up, maybe?
Well, I have the view.
There's just a very, how about the other sheet that had just a very short summary?
He summarizes it.
Yeah, he summarizes them. One of the documents was a summary.
Yeah.
Yeah, there is. Can you, do you mind reading that out, Michael?
Yeah.
Let's see that.
The Long Beach Police Department responded to a hundred and thirty-two calls for service when compared to a hundred and forty-two in twenty-twenty-one for a decrease of ten calls for service. During the month of February, six incident reports were documented with no arrests for the month. In summary, the month was very mild, as it was a mix of cold and snow for the most part. Uh, February third, Sergeant James Shulley responded to the four-hundred block of Pine Wood Drive in reference to a domestic dispute. No physical violence, just verbal, and an incident report was documented. This is an ongoing marital dispute, and a divorce is pending in the court system. February sixteen, Sergeant James Shulley responded to the twenty-four-hundred block of Shorewood Drive in reference to a theft report, um, a credit card fraud investigation. The victim reported that there was an unauthorized charge to his credit card. Victim has since been reimbursed by their financial institution. February eighth, Deputy Toby Babcock is conducting an investigation with the town of Michigan Shores, reference inappropriate conduct. We are being assisted by the Indiana State Police Internet Crimes Against Child, Children Computer Forensics Team. This investigation will be ongoing for the next several months while additional information is gathered. Initial evidence was seized as a result of a search warrant that was issued by the LaPorte County Judge. February twenty-second, Sergeant James Shulley responded to the four-hundred block of Pine Wood Drive in reference to a domestic dispute. No physical violence, just verbal, and an incident report was documented. This is an ongoing marital dispute, and a divorce is pending in the court system. February twenty-third, Chief Swistec responded to the four-hundred block of Oakland Drive in reference to a death investigation. A twenty-two-year-old male was discovered deceased in his bed in the early morning hours. We were assisted by the LaPorte County Coroner's Office EMS and the Michigan Fire Department. Optopsy, autopsy and toxicology reports are pending. Cause of death unknown at this time. February twenty-fifth, Sergeant Shulley documented incident report reference to the Kessler Police Supply Exchange. Respectfully, Chief Mark Swistec.
Okay. Thank you very much for reading that out, everybody. Sorry to hear about, um, the death of such a young person. Anytime someone dies a step, and when it's someone young who hasn't been able to do anything much yet, that's even harder. Uh, fire chief, Gary Vannett, please.
Okay, Gary, we had three meetings, uh, we stopped two hundred and fourteen point one-five hours on everything. Um, and Michigan Shores, we had two fire calls, one first responder. Uh, one of the fire calls was a broken water vein down around Birchwood and El Portal. And then we had a medical call on El Portal, and then also that call at Oak on that we referred to earlier. We were there. Um, other than that, it was quiet. Um, but we are planning a pancake breakfast on May first this year.
Excellent.
So, I think the next weekend after that is Monday's day, so that's why we're going ahead of that.
Excellent, all right.
Great.
Sounds good.
That's all I've got.
All right, thank you. Okay, so, we will move on to the building commissioner, pro enforcement officers, reporter, or some pro enforcement officers, until we change names. Okay, anyway, uh, here we go. One property owner has an STR application. He will be on the April BZA agenda to seek a special use for the property. This is four fifteen Pine Wood, Mark Sealer. No new STR permit applications were approved since the last meeting. The following homeowners have inquired about the process, four twelve El Portal, Rachel Zarlin. Uh, BZA did not meet since the last meeting. The advisory plant commission met on three one twenty-two. The, uh, what is it? An application by thirty-six oh five Lake Shore Drive to build a new home on the property was reviewed again, but not approved. They will return for future meeting. Uh, Bill Lang at three hundred Groveland is, uh, uh, interested in doing a fireplace construction, Mark Schmidt of one oh two Meadow with Duck Edition. Uh, Deb approved the following permits, one oh two Meadow for a shed, thirty-nine fifty Hyawatha roof, thirty-eight twenty Brookside interior renovations, thirty-seven oh six Brookside roof replacement. Um, she has been working with three seventeen Groveland, an installation of a new heating unit, three twenty-seven Oakland on plans for a room addition, thirty-six forty-two Birchwood, and then, uh, after, wait a minute, and three twenty-one on Portal for an undetermined addition. They will be submitting permit applications in the future. An update on thirty-nine fifteen Hyawatha, the home is still in the process of being sold. She approved the permit to, uh, or she writes, "I approved a permit to replace the roof. The application was in the name of the current owner. I have not received any response to my inquiry about the DNR remediation order. I did notice that they had cemented over the cracks in the septic tank. I have inquired with the Port County Health Department about how to move forward on this. The county approved a plan for the installation of a Presby septic system included, uh, which included a requirement to replace the septic tank. While I was there last week, the realtor arrived and showed me the occupancy permit issued by LaPorte County, which is not something that is authorized by anybody here, but they, he went obviously directly to LaPorte County. I issued a citation to Mederos Torsa of thirty-eight fifty-four Birchwood for renting on a short-term basis without a permit. Her attorney forwarded a letter to me and the town council arguing that she is a full-time resident and not subject to the STR ordinance. I check on her presence at the property almost every day and see her there very, very infrequently, never for more than a day or two in a row, never more than a few days each month. I have not received any documentation indicating where the coffees can park near their home. I continue to monitor several construction sites as well as STRs. I have reviewed a sample occupancy permit application that Ralph provided. I will continue to investigate a process for the town to take control of issuing occupancy permits. It seems wise to have the town issue them, since we know more about the property, the approved plans and the property owners. However, I will take instruction from the town council on this matter. I have spoken to a surveyor who is dividing seven lots into two parcels along Birchwood. They are very interested in hooking onto the sewer line. The owner of thirty-six forty-two Birchwood is also eager to find out if he can hook onto the sewer line. I have not received any updates concerning the arrangements for property owners to hook onto the line since my last email on the topic. Submitted by Deborah Chubb-Bildman.
Don, I want to add something to the discussion of occupancy permits. When this came up, it was relatively news to me. I haven't lived here that long, but we actually have, as part of our town code, that the building commissioner issues the occupancy permit. I don't know that we have an old one on file. I looked around and found one that's used by a community locally that could be modified to meet our needs. That's what I gave Deb. But I also think we need to discuss with Deb the process, because I think it's, it's fine for the county to issue a permit, but they don't get final approval until we issue a permit. Because they, they're the ones that have the expertise in blocking the building and checking everything out, and I would recommend Deb accompany them on that.
That's a good idea.
She would issue a, a, a final occupancy permit after the fact. Um, I don't think she should insert herself and remove them from that process. I haven't talked to her about that yet, and I just think it, we need to discuss it. I'm not sure what the county does when they walk the the building to give an occupancy permit. Have you guys ever been through that process?
I was years ago, when I was assistant building commissioner with Steve Milligan. He issued a occupancy permit, so somewhere in that office somewhere is probably one that he used back then.
Okay, so, yeah.
It would be over in the, he had building office. They moved that stuff over when-
Oh, it's probably where I am.
But it used to be a common thing. Somewhere along the way, I, I think it just fell off.
Because I went with him, we looked at a house, I, I think it was on Sunset, and we went under the crawl space, and they just had the wires hanging down, and he said, "You gotta get these, put up the joists and then I'll issue you your occupancy permit." But that goes back thirty-five, forty years ago, probably.
So, I, I just, bring it up, because Deb fundamentally works with the town council, which we actually know. This is what the plant commission may be proud of. So, um, I'm going to discuss this with her.
Okay.
And my recommendation to her is to make she make recommendation to the plant commission and the town council is have them afford, because we have, there is a house on the corner from me that's probably really close to occupancy within months, right? And we need to get in front of that, so that those people know that they, how they need to get occupancy, as opposed to what happened with the coffees. They, they didn't do anything wrong.
No.
Once they can.
Okay. All right, thank you, Ralph. So, then you're going to follow up with organizing this, and we'll make sure-
Have you heard him back?
Yes, 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 I got him. Yeah.
Uh, yeah.
We shouldn't, we shouldn't put the talk, because like Ralph says, yeah.
Update.
Just a comment, I think you need to check the, you know, the elements and all that.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, thank you, both of the towns. All right, so that was her report. Now, there is nothing for her cardboard yet, because we haven't done anything. Uh, road commissioner Bob Silkowski, please take it forward.
For the month of February, we worked forty-two hours, majority of that, you know, removal. I sent the council two proposals for, uh, repair of El Portal Drive with Oakdale. I did contact, uh, three other companies. Art Asphalt, I told, talked to them this morning, told them at the end of the night, if you could be of interest, my son. They have got AGC Asphalt and Wooders. Wooders wasn't interested, AGC never answered my call. The two quotes that you see in front of the, uh, sent an email. I would rather shot at the cost for that.
I'll say.
I guess what's the board's pleasure, or what they want to do?
Oh, my God.
I couldn't print it.
Well, it's, it's, uh, it's bad, and I agree with you. The patch is not going to last.
The, uh, I think the problem is the price of the fuel that it is, that might have-
That's one of them.
Well, then just bought that. Make the price jump so high that-
Oh, my gosh.
This is out of the world, too.
You saw them, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Joan, here's another one for you. You can keep those two copies.
We should have Village Michigan, Michigan, if you're part of it, all our construction stuff that goes through here and-
That's a very valid comment, and in fact, every time I drive up and down El Portal, I think about how, how this was, you know, handled in the past. The paving of El Portal. Did the Village of Michigan ever join in on that? No, it was always us.
Some of it is.
Oh, okay.
You know, it's, it's ours.
The biggest problem is that's the danger intersectional town.
Right.
I use a lot of salt there. So, it does win her ways.
Well, I think we have to monitor our roads too, so when they spring and they start hauling stuff over to Village, Michigan, Michigan, because I followed some of those trucks that- Especially when they were hauling in-
That's a police issue.
That's, I know it is, but I'm just- For someone who's been there, she has a few inches that he can get in and get it done. But no, I think that's, were tore a lot when they were doing the putting all those boulders in. Those trucks had to be overweight. They could hardly get started when they stopped at the stop sign. That's how heavy they were.
I'm sure they were.
Yeah. It's not, we don't have any property up against the, the weight. Village Michigan Shores.
Two hundred and twenty feet.
About just-
You know, art, you know, in art.
Right, but I'm saying, I, I don't think it's fair that we put low limits and that we let all this go by, and we're repairing the road.
Thank you, yeah, thanks.
A solution could be, uh, that we change the rules and what required them to get a permit to carry loads over a certain weight. There's no way we can monitor the weight. I mean, that would be-
Well, we used to have also that. The town folks, when they had a building permit, also had to pay a fee for the road. We don't do that anymore. They took that out a few years ago.
I don't let me pay.
Yeah, they took that.
Some several thousands they had to pay. I can think you'd find that, that's what it was.
Bob, for your, for this, when you say patchwork, essentially they're going to rip everything out, grate it.
Grate it all out, about four inches down, put new, write it down, put new asphalt in. It'll be, it won't be a bump, it'll be, that's why.
Build a whole new slab.
This will affect the, the things that are on the list too, because those are all-
No, El Portal's likely on the list a lot.
I mean, the, the list is going to be more expensive than you thought.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. It's, it's a side thing, but yes. But I still said we got to fix it.
Well, we have, we've got it.
We can patch it again and again.
Oh, they're going to come, sorry, yeah, they've, they're already coming out. Okay, because when you did it, it was better, and then, you know.
Well, you did it well, didn't you?
I had the two major ones.
But even out of those, it's already coming out, so. I, you know, any other thoughts or suggestions?
Is this like a, based on your, is this like a one-day thing? And no, because you're going to rip it out?
Yeah, it'll be one day, but won't be till probably mid-April. His asphalt plan is not going to open till April.
Okay.
But if we get to her, we'll just get her rid of the list.
Okay. So, what do you guys think? It looks, that, you know, the Reef and Riley one is at least-
Considerably cheaper.
Yeah.
Is there any reason not to take the lower bid?
No. It's a pretty well-known company.
Volts County has changed their-
You gave them a deadline of today by seven for the rest?
How much time did you give them before?
Huh?
Did you just call them today? You said you called them today?
I called last week.
You are keeping track of that, aren't you?
Yeah. Myo Stone, M-I-L-E-S-Q-O-N, and now, uh, former Volts County.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
So, is there any reason to wait a few more days to see if we get a quote that's more desirable and then approve it by, um, email?
I would say, I'm, Bob would say, I don't think that's going to work if you're going to wait until April to make a decision.
No, no, he's thinking in the next few days. Ralph said to wait a few more days to get a response.
Well, can't you approve something like this via email?
No, we should, it, we'll probably have to do it in person, because we're, you know, but we could hopefully meet for just a few minutes when you- You know, or something one day, not something you want to do, but.
No, I mean, it's just so we have this.
The box.
Yeah, that's all we would have to do.
See what this quote says?
That's according to us. I don't know if anybody can get back to me or not.
Well, why don't you-
We can make it.
Why don't you give us a deadline?
Condition immediately received, yeah.
Let me answer this.
Here we go, all right.
Do a deadline, then we can schedule the, and get a forty-eight hour notice.
I called this morning, said, "Council, we need length." It's seven o'clock. I placed something in my email like that.
Well, it's kind of-
Well, that was a reminder to them, correct?
Yeah, that was a reminder, but.
All right, here we, okay, thank you, Joan, for your comments. Thank you for yours. Michael has a little suggestion. Go ahead, Mike.
No, I was just saying, to kind of address this now, can we make this a conditional? Approve this one with the condition that, you know, we don't, if there's nothing else that comes down the pipeline, we'll just go with this one.
Uh, we can't, you've already given out the prices. And anybody-
Yeah, that's right.
Oh, you're right, so we can't, we're done.
We can't do that.
This is the only thing that we can do.
That's just like picking somebody and saying-
Right.
I have free, but it's from somebody else.
Yeah, right, thank you.
My buddy will do it.
You've got an idea, Joan. Thank you. I mean, thank you for the comment.
I was saying, look what we got.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so, I have a motion.
Right in here, the motion.
That I'm asking for.
Oh, I'll make the motion to approve the Reef Riley proposal for roadwork patch, uh, El Portal intersection with Oakdale.
I'm on second.
All right, we have a motion from Michael Martinez, and it's been seconded by Ralph Fox, to accept the, uh, what do you call it?
Reef Riley.
Reef Riley, uh, proposal for the repair of the intersection of El Portal and Oakdale. And for the sum of, what was the total sum?
Twenty thousand four hundred and thirty dollars.
Okay, wow.
And zero cents.
And, okay. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Unfortunately, okay. Uh, the, uh, motion has been approved. Uh, Bob, please arrange with this outfit to do this as soon as they can, then, okay? Get us on a schedule.
One other, I can-
Please, go ahead.
A tire was damaged behind the parent on the pickup during the month. I put a used tire on it for forty-five dollars. All the tires need to be replaced, because they're just, they're not that good. When I was there getting the tire changed, I got a quote from Flag and Tire for, uh, fouring tires, heavy-duty truck tires, and nine hundred and twenty dollars. When they request to prove the, the tires on the truck.
Tom, again?
Nine hundred and twenty dollars.
Okay, John, there?
I'm good with it.
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve that.
Okay.
I'm second.
Thank you.
All right, Ralph Fox has moved. Michael Martinez seconded to approve the replacement of all ti, the truck tires for the cost of nine hundred and twenty dollars. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. The ayes have it. It's been approved.
There's going to be no, like, traffic diversion.
It's temporary, maybe for an hour, a couple hours, a month.
That's a bit long, so it's going to get a lot.
Pardon?
It's, it's easy.
You know, they can head over to, over here on Meadow.
I think everything's going to be blocked off around it.
All right, thank you very much, Bob. Any other things to give us, or that's it? Okay, thank you. All right. Uh, Ralph, do you have anything to add for the, uh?
Well, there's two things. We're currently cooking with plant commission. One is that we are working on updating the congress plan. Uh, we finally got, moving on that, and over the next few months, we'll work our way through it. We'll go through the normal process that's required. Uh, there will be a public meeting once we get it to that point. And then, uh, after we get past that process, of course, we'll have to come to the town council for, uh, final review improvement. The other big thing that's cooking is the, uh, the house at thirty-six oh five Lake Shore. Of course, somebody bought the property a year, maybe a year and a half ago, and they want to build a new house. And we've gone through a couple of iterations and discussions with them. For various reasons, they're planning to come back to the plant commission sometime in the future with a new proposal.
All right, thank you. I guess Deb added most of everything else that might have been.
You know, Bill's got all the pending stuff, too.
Yeah, so, so that's all. Thank you very much. Um, I got no reports. They haven't had any new meetings for the BZA.[1772.80] Uh, so the only information I got was that there will be a VZA meeting. There's one scheduled for March seventeenth at six thirty PM. That's it, and I have no clue what's on their agenda. Uh, regarding White Ditch, the Drainage Board, I participated in a meeting today and I reported to them. First of all, we were not on the agenda or anything, which is always put to here. But I listened to see what's going on with regards to everything else. And at the end of the meeting, I did report that we do have two, I guess, issues in the part that the Port County Drainage Board controls, right at the corner, and not at the corner, right to the east of the Pocagin Bridge, a tree on the Mulcahy property, which is really on the edge of that bank, has slipped and is going all the way down. So, uh, Mr. Mulcahy, I've said, well, he was going to try to pull it on on his own. But, you know, it's going to be a heavy tree and the Drainage Board can handle that too. So, um, I, they have asked me to get in touch with Mick, that Mick would take that out for him. Because I've got an informal, you know, agreement with him. Uh, also at the Purse property, um, that is farther east. I mean, between, no, not east, but it's west, between Pocagin and Hiawatha. Uh, big limb has fallen off one of the trees and I know they've taken off a lot of the smaller branches, but part of that trunk is, the big huge trunk is over there, so I let them know about that too. So I think, I think Mick has to report to them about it. I mean, whether we can replace. Can I just break down for you guys? Pardon? Break down from your house? Yeah, the, he's over at the, you know, it's closer to Pocagin. You know where that, where that tree is down, so, yeah. Uh, so those are the two things I told them about. I don't have anything new from Samantha Arnold. Oh, with regards to NERC, there was a meeting next week, it's an executive meeting. So the rest of the general commissioners participate, but we don't vote. We just listen to what is going on and we report out, so I'll be participating in that. Um, but then there's another thing. There is a program called Communit Trees, like take the word community, but make it R-E-E-S at the end. And they've got a program, it's like a grant program, where they provide trees to various communities, depending on what you want to do. So, uh, I have completed an entire form for them already. And I just need to, there's a couple of things that I have to, to get ready for. And I'll submit it via email, it's due by the bottom. I figure what we can find out. I'm not asking for a lot of trees. I figured first we'd go around, you know, ten was the minimum. So I said, okay, let's ask for ten trees. We could probably water ten trees, you know, so, so we can use them maybe for the parks. We need to replace something. We've got a lot of right-of-way in the town, you know, lots where trees have come down. We've got our ditch. I was ready to ask for fifty, but then I thought I better not because I don't know who's going to water those trees. So anyway, but I am completing that so that, you know, I figure it's a worthwhile program to do that.
Nice.
Okay, so that's for NERC. Um, there have been no more COVID nineteen meetings for the last three weeks. So hopefully they will not return. Hopefully we won't need them for long time, if we need them at all. So, um, so no report on that. And then Ray, I, although I forgot to add him back onto this. Ray has gotten some information about different kind of training for various things for FEMA or, you know, the flood and all this stuff. So he'll be participating in those to keep himself educated on that. Okay, so that's it for those reports. Now, we can move on to section nine, unfinished business. Uh, the next steps in the road, grant application process. And I think that when we met, I don't remember, it was probably maybe last month, uh, and had, you know, brought this up. Uh, I know that I asked, there had been a, I think, a question raised, no, at the January meeting, that there was concern that the firm that generally does these for us has does the, um, proposals of how much everything might cost or how it's going to be done, how much material needs to be done and so forth. It has been done for us by one firm. And, um, the feeling was that perhaps they just take us to the, you know, to the cleaners on the fees. So I think that we need to, and I think I brought it up at the time, that we should actually find other engineering firms that do that kind of a, put together that kind of information if we are in, indeed, you know, wary of whether we're getting a good price or not. So I don't know what you gentlemen think about that. Well, I don't think, Bob was at that meeting, so it might be good to get. Well, but see, he doesn't handle the decision-making, um, hiring, you know, that.
He has experience.
Okay. When Rich had an issue with the company, because we're basically, we would be hiring the guys that gave us the, the estimate, if you will.
No, he was saying that they all, the town always uses them. He didn't say there was anything wrong with that.
Yeah. No, he did, he did. He said it was way too, he thinks that they charge us too much. That was. So the question is, should we get a quote? Should we get a quote from someone else to do that kind of? Because it has to be, they have to make the plan, the whole thing is a plan on exactly what needs to be done to that road, how I will have to be, how high, how much you're going to excavate and all this. So for all of those, for any streets that we want to do. Well, that's what I want to, my thought was. Well, let's see. Well, my. To Bob, but, um, certainly it's going to cost more than we thought, as we found out this evening. So maybe we don't try to scope the whole thing in phase one or whatever it is. Maybe we identify the top three areas, we got to do something now. Work through that process, get those, get those fixed, and then look at the next step. Don't try to plan the whole thing right now. Because we're not going to have money anyway. Yeah, okay. Well, you know, the whole thing is that we have to apply by summertime, uh, early summer. Well, I think beginning July with regards to the, um. So Bob, we're talking about the, uh, the overall plan to fix roads, that ongoing plan. And you were asked me when we were talking about this and, um, I kind of wanted to make sure we got your background into conversation. Uh, you know, part of me says, you know, we're not, we probably can't afford to fix everything in that phase anyway. So why not just identify the ones that we initially see as critical and get quotes from one or two, however many people we need to, and then move forward on a few at a time, as opposed to trying to do the whole thing at once. But if we, if we have to have a plan by summer to get the. Well, we got the one report, but we need to not, but this is the, this is the next step. And we have to get ourselves organized because we have to finish the applications for, you know, to get it, to get the grants. So we can't let this drag out for several months to do this. It would be something we have to take care of now. So if that engineering firm, for instance, doesn't work, then we have to turn to somebody else. For example, that engineering, uh, what is that engineering firm that we always use, John? The one who did the Pacer report first?
John Doyle.
John Doyle, okay. I kept wanting to say John Goodman. Uh, the Doyle firm has done this, but now this global engineering, which still exists, which did the struarts work, they deal with soils, they deal with roads as well. Are they a potential candidate to do something like that? And from the research I did, because I did research on looking for firms that handle, because you, you know, now, now you've got, you decided to bake the cake, right? So now we need the recipes. So this is, we're looking for basically that recipe right now on how they're going to, you know, the strata and all this kind of stuff specifically for those particular streets, you know, to be, you know, whatever is chosen. So, um, from the research I did, I found out that a survey company, surveying companies, you know, and surveyors slash engineers do this as well. Because I think John Doyle's company is also a surveyor. So in other words, do we, you know, it may be worthwhile to talk to them to find out what they charge to put this kind of a plan together, regardless of whether we do one street this year we plan or two. We need a quote to get that.
We can't use the Doyle's report?
Well, we can, see, we use that report, but according to John Doyle, now we have to do a second report that they have to generate, which to me is like, wow, I didn't realize, John, that they did this twice.
So it's the last time.
Yeah.
Then we may owe ten dollars an hour to do that fifth report.
The, yeah, the Pazer. And we paid him seven grand.
No, we would pay seven, something.
Yeah, seven, some. Yeah, that was what I was wondering about last time. They gave us this street-by-street estimate, it's a broad estimate. And, but apparently from what I picked up at the last meeting, that's not a firm estimate. We've got to go get firms to. Very specific. Truly estimate what they're doing. Yeah, that's a general plan that's required, that would first.
Now, if you don't like Doyle, I don't know what you're quoting, but Long Beach has the associates to do all their.
Okay, engineering kind of thing? Well, then that would be one of those that we should call, so, um.
It's very, it'd be a lot, a lot, a lot of money to do.
Oh, for doing the plans?
Yep, I don't know.
I would imagine.
If we're not, are we going ahead with the grant?
Well, we're going to, we're going to be applying for it and, uh, but we need to regard, you know, our next step is getting this other, this other process, you know, underway. But, uh, Rich raised the issue and he thought that, uh, John Doyle was charging us too much, you know, for doing all this work. I don't, because I don't do this personally, I don't redo roads in a big place. I don't know what the real quotes would be, which is my suggestion, we try someone else.
Seven thousand dollars is nothing compared to what Long Beach is paying us. And they're talking forty, fifty thousand dollars.
Right, engineering is not cheap.
No.
Yeah.
And it's stupid. It's stupid. We know what roads need to be paid.
Yeah. But we already, yeah.
On that list, and so I don't know.
Yeah.
May, I did a change when I submitted two years ago that, I think Hiawatha's fall apart. And the old thing is the, uh.
Okay, well, then we.
It was moved up from twenty twenty-four to two years ago.
Right. Okay, well, we need to then, then perhaps we just go back to John Doyle. He has been working and he knows our streets. And if we need to get this done as our next step, then we should get it done and go forward with, you know, the rest of our applications.
But to Ralph's point, can we do the high priorities? I thought on the report that it kind of listed the ones that needed the most attention versus.
Okay.
Why can't we just get back with John Doyle and explain to him that he feels Hiawatha needs it more than one that's on there, rather than just let it all go?
If he's going to do anything, he's going to come back out here and look around, he'll see how bad.
He's already been out.
Yeah, he's done, because he had the under, they have.
He did that in the first part of December.
Yeah. So. Well, I. Okay. Not knowing anything about it, I would say you need at least two quotes. Right, so you know what? I will, I will inquire with John, oh, just to compare something. Well, yeah. No, no, I understand what you're saying and I understood Rich's concern about it. So then I, I will take it upon myself to look into this then and make sure that I get any information, okay? With regards to a second firm, talk to them about getting this. I will also talk to Doyle and, uh, you know, to find out what he would tell me about how much it may cost. And I'll give them both the same, you know, like rundown of like, is it for, you know, all the streets? Just two of the streets or whatever, you know, and how they have to get it done to give me some kind of an estimate, just so we get a good ballpark figure. Okay? Yeah, because getting something, what I don't understand is how much it's going to cost us to get him to do that piece. Not the work. Right. But to get to where we can submit something for the grant.
Well, it should all come out of the grant, right?
Well, but we have to pay it in advance, okay? So the planning stuff.
It's just a different.
It's some kind, they, they have changed different things now. Yeah, they've got different requirements and some things have been changed. So I'm going to get back to him, I will talk to Doyle, John Doyle, and then I will find another firm or do, just to see, you know, I'll go through Better Business Bureau and stuff like that because I do trust, you know, you get some, you know, call and get some information to figure out about that, so.
You know that this is all submitted, submitted to the transportation department, don't you?
It has been, or it has, yes, okay.
It all has been submitted, John Doyle has, he's, that's all been submitted.
Yeah, okay, that was the stuff on December, right? Yes.
That.
Yeah, okay.
If you do change it, I don't know what to change.
No, that stuff stays. I don't think that that gets changed. This is an additional thing that John Doyle was talking about, so.
Right, I understand that, but you were talking about doing Hiawatha instead of something else that's on there.
Okay. Also, we may not be able to do Hiawatha sooner rather than later. Well, I'll find out about that.
For John Doyle.
Okay, okay. That's, I will include that in my thing here, okay? All right, and I thank you for your comments, gentlemen, here. Um, okay, let's go down, hiring a new town attorney. We are at zip right now because the firm that we had been speaking with the gentleman um, has decided that it was, we are a little bit too far away, it would incur an awful lot of driving around for them. And they're in Valpo, I think it's Valpo? Are they from Valpo? The people we're talking to? Yeah. So all the attorneys are in different places. Yeah, they're in different places, but, you know, so anyway, so they did say no. So, uh, we are back to square one, looking for, um, more firms. So anyway, if you have heard of anybody working, I mean, I don't know if you've come across anybody else with regards to municipal law. I know that, um, not everybody who is up on the AIM list is actually a municipal lawyer. They're just lawyers like to, you know, grab on on one or two issues, you know, that might affect the town, including doing, um, a lot of lawsuits and bankruptcies and things like this, so. We don't really deal much in that.
Chris Willoughby is still the attorney for Long Beach.
I don't know whose attorney he is. He was here at one point and then he left us, he quit.
I mean, I had saw him out in a social gathering.
Uh-huh.
He was interested in.
Uh-huh. I think we should talk to him.
He did a good job in Long Beach, I know.
Which one was that?
Chris Willoughby.
Let's, uh, let's talk to him. All right, well, then you go ahead and anything, you know, anybody else you might find out? Okay? What I'll add also to that now is I really haven't had time, but I'm going to go back through the list that we had accumulated the last six months and see if there's anybody that we overlooked. And I have a few other people to call to see if they can give me recommendations. Okay, excellent. Okay. But. Super. Very good, so that that's where it stands, that we have to keep looking, you know, we're still searching. Okay, thank you. Um, now, we have never put together a resolution to account for the validation of the purchase of public announcement boards using the ARPA funds. And I know that we were asking if we could combine this with other purchases and put them all into like one resolution so we don't have to keep doing resolutions. And Joan, I know that we asked, somebody may have asked before. I have been trying to find out through the municipal network if somebody has done multiples or, or singles. But I don't have a single resolution. Have you ever actually found a resolution that is just for that and doesn't include a billion other things?
Through the attorney sometime.
But the, yeah, but that one, I've got a copy of that, but that one, you know, covered all kinds of other things besides that, so.
We have to decide what we can do.
What we want to do, right?
What we want to do and what we can do and how it relates to the COVID pandemic.
Yeah.
That we have to do first. You have to decide what you want to do. We only have sixty thousand dollars.
I believe that we had already made some decisions on that at some meeting that took place in the fall. We made a list. We made a list during the fall. And I think we would.
But you have to go over that list and write down as to what you think and why it relates to the pandemic. You can make forty lists, but we could probably not have to come off because it's not related.
Right, okay.
Yeah, there's a lot of things that you can't.
Right, well, we have, we have some information on it. Both Joan and I attended that. Can you dig up that? Yes, I will do that, okay. And if you could circulate it to us, we'd have a better discussion value than it's taking.
A elected official cannot get anything.
Too bad.
I'm elected.
I wasn't elected. Yeah, I'm staying, okay, I'm going to stay there. I'm going to stay there, okay.
But at the very least, that's.
All right, okay. No, that was good, all right.
And you're elected?
Okay, so, yeah, Joan is elected, no, Brenda's not. She can get money. Okay, so, yeah, Joan is elected, no, Brenda's not, she can get money.
Oh, yeah.
All right.
But it has to relate to COVID.
Oh, however, yes, I think we need increased pay for people who are in the town, even the elected ones like the court treasurer. For that time period, for time period, yes. And in fact, we did vote to do that, except I don't think we ever, did we give it a month? We have to.
You didn't do anything on it, you haven't done anything as far as the resolution to.
All right, so we have to, okay, that is a priority here, this is for next month, okay? Okay, so then, okay, I've got that down over here. Now, a question was raised, uh, and I added to the, um, our, our, or, our agenda here about installation of notice boards for the town. When Rich and I were speaking earlier today, Rich thought that when it comes time for the park board meeting and the park booster club meeting, which will take place March 28th, he will be able to get some more information together about the actual installation of, of those public notice boards.
Because the two are in the garage, right?
I believe, yeah.
They're delivered, they were delivered last fall.
Yes.
And we have this one.
Yes.
And then Chief Bendix, do you, I think it was you, did we ever figure out if there was electricity that needed to be turned on or if.
No, we just need to wire it up.
Just to wire it up?
Yeah. And that, that's what I was wanting to do here, okay? Once it started thawing a little warmer.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, all right, so that was Rich's comment to me when he and I were speaking about that. Okay, our next issue, E picking the dates for the leaf pickup in town. Did Jason get back to you?
Yeah, um, thank you for the reminder. I sent an email out to Jason, uh, this afternoon to kind of figure out what, uh, dates were good for him, because in our contract that we signed, we had two spring pickups, just like we did in the fall, so I have yet to hear from him, but he's pretty responsive. So once I hear something from him on dates, I will get that, uh, out to everyone via email and then I'm just gonna use the same template that we use for the announcement every, every season, change the dates, change the months, and then we should be good.
Right, I think it will be pretty good. And maybe what we need to add is, um, to get a little bit more specific on the kind of sticks that we're picking up, we are not taking tree debris that you are trimming down off of your trees, but small sticks that you encounter in the raking process of the leaves.
Right, and you had feedback for me in terms of the notice, was there any other clarification outside of that?
No, I don't think so.
Well, we wanted to be clear, um, that it's in this timeframe, I mean, it's obvious to me.
That's right, that's what we have.
But some people thought that, um, they could wait till Thursday and put their stuff out.
That's correct.
And the truck had already been by.
Right, to just remind them, when it say by that date, it has to be by Monday morning, yeah, just like your trash, yeah, yeah, you're right.
That was one bit of confusion.
That was very much so, thank you for bringing, for reminding.
So what I'll do, yeah, because I kind of vaguely remember that, I'll pick the language to reflect that, send it out to you guys, I think it's pretty straightforward.
Okay, very good, okay, thank you, Mike.
Yeah, Michael, I don't, I, for some reason, don't have last year's dates still in my calendar, so.
Um, you must have had a fun day.
All right, and then, uh, we do have here the implications of the Strulowitz sewer hookup to Michigan City sewers for other residents. So we are not in any position, yes, to give any kind of answers to anyone on this, um, on the sewer hookup to Michigan City, because it is a work in progress. I have been communicating with Steve Stanford in Michigan City, he is the operations manager for the sanitary district. So he and I have been communicating, we've spoken, we've emailed, and I have spoken with Joan, Joan has shared with us several documents, I believe four, you sent us with regards to the Strulowitz, um, issue, three at least, four, I thought.
I've sent you almost everything I know.
Okay, okay.
The next step is to check with Michigan City and with Global, we talked about this last month.
Yes, well, but we, according to Steve Sanford, he was waiting to see if we actually found any kind of a contract, and he's looking for something on his end. Were you able to track down those minutes that I had asked for, the ones that are from December, uh, 2013? Cause those minutes are actually mentioned in the, in the Global? No, not, no, not those minutes, you sent out minutes that followed later on in the summer when the approvals were done.
No, December 13th was because somebody else.
I had asked you for them, but I didn't get a copy.
No, Laura asked for them.
Oh, well, I asked you twice, so I do know that. And I will resend my emails, and because, and I'll check with Laura then about that. But Laura said, Laura recommended to us that we actually speak with an attorney, find someone else that actually deals with utilities, because they're, you know, so that we would, that was Laura's recommendation. So anyway, um, I will go through the emails, because I did not see the one for the December 2013. Um, okay, so, and, and anyway.
Now, wait a minute, December 20th?
December 20th, it doesn't say 20th, but it says they were December from 2013. I would have to reread.
2013.
2013, yes, December 2013. And I, I would imagine it was probably from the regular minutes, not from the year-end minutes where, you know, last-minute decisions are done. That, uh, the, the Global, that engineering firm, Gold was, refers to the minutes of December 2013, so I would like to know what's in those minutes, if they're talking about them, you know, because we don't know what's, I mean, I personally don't know what's in that. Pardon?
That was long before it was actually played.
Well, but that, but we're talking about when these letters are being exchanged and the dates on the letters when this was going on before the approvals, so it would be nice to know what was in there. So anyway, uh, that is for, so anyway, we are working on that, and my response to anybody who's called me is that I can't give any kind of an answer now, I have recommended that that as well, that it is something that is being worked on, because we have to make sure everything is, you know, tidy before we can actually, you know, begin.
Yeah, I, I agree with being cautious.
You know, with, with doing that, so. Um, new business, anybody have anything else to add for new business? Okay, you'd love an old business, have I forgotten something?
You were, I sent you that information on, um, alert.
Oh, yes, oh, that's right, you did send us that, okay. All right, I only responded via email, so I, we did not bring this out, it was that you, uh, I know you made a comment on that, that alert system? Rich, do you remember getting from Joan, information on that, with it's, it's an outfit that, you know, is willing to send out emails and whatever.
I did my comment on that.
Okay, so, uh, I made a comment, and my, my comment is, is that, you know, we have the website, and the website generates, you know, an email, we've got a list, not everybody has signed up for it, so I think we need to keep encouraging people, every time we send them a bill or a newsletter, please sign up for the town's email addresses. There are, um, because we don't have everybody on it. I have checked, pardon?
We will not.
No, that's true, we may not get everybody.
Not everybody.
I understand, but same thing, that's true, and I don't expect that, 100%. But there are quite a few names that are not on the list that I know have emails, and they send us emails, but they have not signed up, they have to agree to allow this to be, you know, for us to put it on, I can't just add an email and say, oh, here's George, I'm gonna put him on. Uh, anyway, so what was your thought about, I think you had a positive thought on this?
I'm trying to refresh.
Well, anyway, but the, this, this particular service would send out email alerts, or they can generate a letter to send to people, or they can make a phone call and so forth, you know, to send it. So the people who are signing up for emails don't need letters of any kind, they would get the email, but, you know, through our website, we can do the very same thing. We've got an email list that's generated, and it goes out, Samantha pops it right out, and it goes out to everyone on the list at the same time.
Well, I've used systems like this before, we, in the building I used to work in, we had one, um, because it was a small building, a hundred employees, and we had a lot of staff to do things, so we signed up for a service that would communicate to people if we had a snow day or power was out or something. There were still five people that would not give us their home phone number or their cell phone number, uh, because they're just that way. So you, you're, you're never gonna get everybody to sign up, you can't force it. So I do kind of agree that we have a system in place, it's free.
Yeah.
I don't know that we use it enough, uh, and maybe that's a kind of separate conversation sometime. We do send out these, uh, these newsletters, and I think they're great, but they're, we may, maybe there's another avenue to communicate, uh, things more regularly.
Um, Samantha tries to send out this little news blurb, now have you ever looked at it? I know that you're a listener, best is Teresa. The little short, so just say, you know, the old blurb, 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 blurb.
I, I think that's good. But, um, there may be other things we want to communicate, um, in a more rapid fashion, which is kind of what this.
What this service would do.
Thing Joan ran into, was like more immediate things.
Okay.
But, um, I just think it's, I would.
Like the cars that are shut off, the streets gonna be blocked here.
Yeah, okay, well, you know, maybe it would be worth going in it to do that, I mean, it was, this is just my opinion, you know, that I said that, I know Michael was in.
Well, for instance.
You were, you thought it was a good idea.
When we fix the road, and a, um, part of, uh, just to let the community know that's gonna happen, uh, but it also promotes the work the community is doing, to let them know that we're actively trying to do something about this. And, uh, by the way, this road's gonna be shut down for half a day on the 31st. Now, short and sweet, but that puts a bit more burden on Samantha to communicate that, because basically it's an email, so it's pretty.
It's an email, so it's real.
So I don't know, those kinds of things, we could have a more of an ongoing.
Yeah.
And how do we communicate them to sign up again? Can you refresh?
Uh, we generally put it in the newsletter, we've been sending it out, Joan has added it, you know, to, um, when we, when we put it out in the newsletter, in the park board, when the, when the booster club goes out, you know, on the bottom it says, please sign up for town emails, uh, so, you know, because people don't really walk into the office to say, hey, I just moved here, to give you all the information, correct?
Some do.
Some do, okay, but, you know, so there, we probably get some like this, do you pass those along to somebody, those emails? I don't, I don't remember getting them.
I just think we keep promoting it.
You've got a ton of them.
I, from, what do you mean, I got a whole bunch, a ton of them, I got a bunch of emails?
You've got a bunch of email addresses showing up department.
Oh, those emails, yes, yes, the number that you gave me, yes, that's true, that's where I was thinking of those things, I thought you meant somebody walked into the office and signed up for it, I, I don't know that I've seen those.
No, I didn't see you.
Okay, all right. So the, uh, you did send me a few I remember that I got, but then, so we don't have that many who are registering in the office, um, they have signed up via the park board, you know, for those, so now the ones Joan gave me an envelope a couple of weeks ago, so I do have those, and I check those against the list that I had. And I added to the list, and, um, not all of which are on Samantha's list yet, so I'm merging the two lists to make sure that she can get them, you know, all of those, so. But, but that's, you know, and it's on the website, to please sign up, you know, there's an offer.
Okay.
Anyway, but, well, then let's take a look at that stuff that he sent anyway, and we can make a decision next month, we don't have to make this decision now. Okay, but, but take a look at it.
If you want the salesman to come in and explain it to you.
I'm sure he will.
Jack, is it, is it available?
Yeah, I'm sure.
So I, I did do some research in, in looking at, um, what state law allows to communicate official documents, and Joan has been right throughout this entire process, that, you know, we, um, we have to post things on the door, uh, and if we have these.
Notice boards.
Notice boards, we can use those. But it's very clear in state law that you can't use email or websites to communicate official.
Correct, yeah.
You know, they, they, you can put it there, but you also have to do.
Yes, absolutely.
Newspaper or a message board or something like that. But you can forego the newspaper thing if you have this message board.
That's right, yeah.
So that's, that's the good thing about having those in place, because then that regular row, you're going and paying for the, the newspaper every time, we can not.
Yes, yes.
You can get a little news boy or something.
Yes, so that, that is, you know, the benefit, investing in those.
With this 75 year, we're gonna have a lot of people looking for that, too.
Absolutely, that's a good idea, sure, oh, that's a good idea, too, every time, every time something goes out for that, we can add it even to that mailing too, so. Okay, so there is no attorney report, you know, obviously, because we don't have a, you know, regular attorney right now.
Do you do old business?
Uh, old business, I did ask about old business, you know, but we started talking about the alert, and I thought everybody was trying, what's old business?
Old business is what, as far as the court treasurer's office, we've been working with people who are what we call delinquent, and we've done very well in getting several lovely, long time delinquents working.
Mm-hmm, super, thank you.
And we're gonna continue.
Good job, okay. All right, thank you for letting us know that.
Nice work.
Uh, miscellaneous.
Information?
You know, there are companies that do charge that.
Twenty-five dollars in hours while you're working on it? That does sound good, doesn't it?
Yeah. Miscellaneous business.
Cheaper than attorney.
Uh, unpaid leaf collection, uh, I think we had last time around, I still included this, I think that we have to wait until we, any other issues that come up with this, perhaps until we actually have our own attorney on board to, to continue with those.
So what, we have about 20, give or take, that refuse, I mean, ballpark?
We've had a couple that have given in and paid it, yeah, or I explained to them that it's necessary.
Okay.
It's kind of comparable to me that, that crisis is people pay for costs of that.
Right.
Yes, I know.
Yeah.
I don't think it's worth having the hourly lawyer rate to do this.
Yeah.
If you said bring somebody on.
Well, no, but the lawyer with regards to whether we could do something with regards to an ordinance, or if something has to be brought in with regards to that, that.
Because what we talked about.
Our issues and permits on the collection as far as the, yeah, surprise, that we have to go through.
So basically, we have to just make sure we keep really good lists of who hasn't paid and the contacts that go out to them and so forth, you know?
Yeah, well.[1596.92]